Good morning, it is nine o'clock. I will call a meeting to order, you have the agenda, item number two is approved tentative agenda.
Motion to approve the tentative agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda as presented, all of them favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item number three, approved minutes of last meeting, Betty if you would read the November twenty seventh minutes, please.
November twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. They're having a conversation, I'm just gonna let them finish their conversation.
You see, please.
Chairman, please call the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM, members present were Clues, Rasmussen, and Helgabold. Motion by Helgabold, second by Rasmussen to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of November twentieth, twenty twenty-three were read and approved, approved claims for payment. An open forum, Toni Nicholas, Wright County Assessor, stated that Vanguard Appraisals Company will be in Wright County December nineteenth and twentieth. They will be reviewing approximately sixty properties those two days along with her staff. Motion by Clues, second by Helgabold to open the public hearing on the construction permit application for JTT, JT Dean Centrum and section eighteen Vernon Township, motion carries. Sandy McGrath stated that the proposed confinement feeding operation will be to construct two new chicken egg layer buildings, one new dry manure storage building, and one new biosecurity personnel building at an existing poultry confinement facility. The animal unit capacity of the confinement operation after construction will be twenty-eight thousand animal, twenty-eight million, sorry.
Two point eight million, shouldn't we?
Eight million, yeah, I get three zeros missing there. Animal units, which is two point eight million chickens averaging three pounds or more. The matrix met a passing score and the county has requested that trees be planted but was not part of the matrix estimated. There were no public or written input on this facility. There was then a motion by Clues, second by Helgabold to crew the site and close the hearing, motion carries. Adam Clemmons, Wright County Engineer, updated the board that they are blading routes as much as possible. They also conducted a motor grader recovery training, this included this included having a shop mechanic teach each grader operator on where to hook up to their grader in such an instance that they need to be towed or pulled out. Secondary road employees are done with mowing of the pavements, ditch burning, and brush cutting. The crews did go out on the twenty-sixth of November to sand intersections and hilltops. Julie Edwards, UDMO Director, presented the annual report for services in Wright County. Upper Des Moines Opportunity Incorporated proved, provided assistance to two million six, two thousand six hundred and eleven individuals and in one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight households with a total cost of services, three hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents for Wright County citizens. Some of the programs they have is L-heap, food pantries, chore, senior program, weatherization, and help with rent, to name a few. UDMO is requesting continued partnership and financial support in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. This will be taken into consideration at budget time. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Helgabold to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
During soon, I think there's one on the two point eight million and then one on provided.
Yep, and then there's also, this included having, instead of have, a shop mechanic, have being, yes. So. See, it just proves that Amanda has to take them.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, who the hell took notes last week?
Hey, is there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, they will stand approved as corrected. Plans for payments went around. I don't know. Open forum for public input.
Morning Dean, this is Bob.
Bob.
Thanks for the quick response to our request for the minutes on the website, greatly appreciated, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Seth.
Okay, item number six, take action off on approval or denial of paying medical examiner investigation, registration, and meeting expense. Were you here for public input?
No, okay, fair enough.
No, I'm later.
Please, I got you.
Again, item number six, take action on approval or denial of paying medical examiner investigator registration and meeting expense of two hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents for John Nissam.
So John is going for training, he lives in Wright County, I believe he works out of the Renwick facility, facility or ambulance service. The, the class was, I believe, sixty-five dollars and then he split the hotel room with another medical examiner investigator. And so just, we have it as medical examinations in our thing, this is up and above what is normal, so we decided to bring it to the board and we just bring all of the new ones. Joan tried getting hold of John Aronson.
He's wintering over in Antarctica.
And yes, he didn't answer from Antarctica.
He did?
It did. I don't know, but. Yes, so anyway, so we did try to, I can't remember what she said about the conversation, but anyway.
Okay.
I motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve paying for the medical examiner investigator registration and meeting expense of two thou, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents for John Nissam, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item number seven, Kelly Corkle, Wright County Chief Deputy Assessor, review and take action on allowing or disallowing family farm application.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, okay, so we have sixteen new applications, which involve ten different landowners. So yeah, not a ton, just gotten here for you. And just a little FYI, whenever there's a sale that includes a DOB with an ag sale, we do send a postcard out notifying the new owners saying you may qualify for such and such credits, just kind of let them know stuff in our office or give us a call to see, you know, we want to make sure anybody who qualifies for it, at least applies.
Sixteen, you are recommending approval for all.
Yes, yes, so these are the, we are recommending approval for all.
I'll make that motion.
So I got it.
I have a motion and a second to go with the assessor's recommendation to allow family farm applications for, it's not tax abatement, it is far, family farm tax credit.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. I'll get those signed Kelly after the meeting and I'll get them back to you.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am, thank you. We'll drop down to item number ten. Jeremy Gavas, Wright County Assistant Engineer to report.
Morning.
Good morning.
We are final, in the final stages here of getting a couple, it's one paving project, two locations. This would be a signing of the final plans for this project. I'm gonna give you this one and I'm gonna give for the one that needs to be signed.
Thank you.
So this is, this is new asphalt on P thirty-two, which is west of Goldfield. The same road that we did the sand seal on three years ago in preparation for.
Yeah, really, really help out.
Yeah, well, we're, we're trying to save our sub base, so there's no point in putting something new over.
Cause it was really terribly cracked up and.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a one inch mill, two inch asphalt there as well as White Fox, R thirty-three down the little stop for one mile.
And what's happening at the intersection of seventeen and R thirty-two is, or does that encompass that entire distance?
So what we'll do is go up to the state right away.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and we can do the radius with dirt brush.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of times we do do the radius, so. And then vice versa, when they do a state remote, they'll also do, they'll come into us and do our radius as well, so.
So this is what will go out for good?
This will go out for bid, we put it to February fourth. So this would make two projects for next year would be the Woolstock Bridge as well as this small. This is a standalone farming market.
Yes, okay, and you need our approval on this.
We need your signature on that title page and that will, is the last finishing touches for this project, so all the permits, everything has been located and we're ready to go.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plans for project FMC zero nine nine one oh four dash five five dash nine nine, which is the resurfacing with milling of the, as you call it, our C thirty-two west of Goldfield and also R thirty-three between the White Fox Road and Woolstock.
Yeah, C seventy.
You need all of our signatures?
C seventy county line, yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yep, I need all three signatures.
You need these back, Jerry.
You can have them if you want, but I'll take them back and give them to contractor if you don't want them.
I'll put them in there. That.
Thank you.
Okay, and then update on secondary road.
Okay, so last week, we made a very large push on brush cutting and the, and right away. Blades were cutting brush and granite routes and placing traditional snow fences where we know the problem areas are hungry. I think you'd see one north here on Madison, out by Mazda, that's a very large snow fence because that's a bad area for, so we got that done last week. Trucks are also helping, they're also brush cutting grain the routes and still burning ditches clearing for snow. We were able to actually do one whole township last weekend brush cutting, which was fifty-seven months. They, they hit it hard last week, so now we're, we did boon and now we're moving into Liberty this week, so. Work orders, we completed forty-five last week, eight which were repairs and then thirty-two which was right aways in ditches, so. One utility and three service, so they're, they're moving their back out again today and it's gonna be a push until the ditches fill up.
So I need the weather coming too.
Yeah, yeah, so I would assume probably one and a half townships this week, I'm sure they'll hit because the Liberty is a little bit less than that boon was, so. You get around the river and it gets, it's a little hairy in the ditches, so.
Get the brush cut every year or is it every year?
Yeah, yeah, we're brush cutting, usually we do it like each area, each guy would, each shed would go out into their areas and brush cut. This year we're doing a whole new spin on it, we're putting eight pickup trucks, we're hammering them, like going down and each have a separate road they have to do, so they're meeting in the middle and I say one township in a week, that's never been done, so. Moving, moving in the right direction, that's all I have.
I have in the minutes last week, and maybe that needs to be corrected also then. Employees are done with the mowing of pavements, ditch burning, and brush cutting, do you have your notes from last week?
I think, I know you were done with the first part, you were done with the.
I know they got more, all the orders served as you put away.
Yeah.
So my superintendent.
I have my paperwork upstairs. Okay.
I think it slowed down last, it's running because of the snow.
Yeah, mowing was the only thing they had a hundred percent complete on.
Oh, okay, I see, it's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
There was no percentages on the other two, right?
There were no percentages on the other two.
Okay.
Jeremy, will you check with that email that I sent you to see what dates would be, would work for you?
Yeah. Adam had just responded, we're gonna be at the office that day.
Both dates?
Yeah, and then he gave a couple other dates that would work.
Okay.
For us, we, we have an engineer's conference in my free time.
Okay, alright. How about meetings last week?
I had UDMO. One thing I would like to emphasize, we have thirty-nine families that need bicycles that we have not fulfilled yet, I would appreciate it if people want to get a hold of me or if somebody would like to sponsor some of them. Otherwise I will have to take care of them. And it costs about fifty bucks per family, you get that taken care of so kids can have Christmas.
More of a demand this year or just less people?
No. It, less people given. Or maybe they don't know about.
I'll give you fifty dollars for them.
If anything will help, because it's gonna cost me about fifteen hundred bucks to get it filled. And also, we moved, and I went and helped them, oh my God. We moved the building that they were in in Fort Dodge by the old, or the new fairway down to, straight across from the courthouse. They needed my pickup and trailer to help move, they had a lot of furniture, just a lot. I, I basically stayed there till right at four o'clock and I had to leave, but I was the only guy there and it sucked. Because we had heavy, heavy stuff, there was like six women there. God bless, and they worked their butts off carrying all this, we did have an elevator in the new place because we're basically getting to paying half the rent. They are very cautious with money they get, I mean, basically take the time to try to get people to help them move and cut their rent from, what was it, seventeen hundred bucks a month down to like eight hundred bucks a month? I mean, they do watch where the money goes, so just so you know, UDMO is an excellent source for people that need help. They do really are very responsible with their money, but it really sucked moving them and they got it done the next morning, but it was not good.
Thanks for doing that.
No problem, other than that, we had our green district meeting and then we got our statewide supervisor meeting in Charles City coming up this Thursday at eight thirty, which Carl is in charge of, God help him.
It'll be smooth operation.
Other than that, I've.
Well, I had opiate meeting, we meet monthly on that, continue to progress, so getting dollars in from different organizations and just kind of maneuvering the requirements of what we can use the money for, what we can't, working with the schools and the police department, so that's kind of plugged forward.
And the only meeting that I had was, again, the IDDA meeting, I O D N H District Association Annual Meeting. I guess the biggest hot topic on that was railroads and, and trying to get them to recognize the laws that have been passed concerning work that needs to be done in the railroad right of ones, so we will continue to work on that.
And excuse me a minute, back to the UDMO for the bicycles, if you would like to donate fifty dollars for a family, just make the check out to UDMO if you would, please.
Alright, it is nine fifteen. Item number eight, open cash rent bids for the Wright County Farms. Okay, and this year we will be opening the bids and we will identify the bids by a number. Let me bid to receive, we received ten bids, so there'll be ten numbers, those will be associated with the bids. Once the high bid is determined, we will name which bidder that, we will name which numbered bidder that is and we will contact that bidder to ensure that they want to proceed with the lease. If they don't, then we will go to the next one down. And once we determine who has won the bid, then we will make that name known.
And then the names of the other people that bid are also public. Yes, okay, because normally we just put their, the last several years we just named who they were and we went on, I don't know why we can't just do that now, why are we doing the number thing? Cause it's all public.
We've always done where we just wrote the name who it was.
Cause I mean, it's all open, there is no, there's no reason to postpone it.
Um, is it, is it, I would, I would argue that point, but I see that two of you are determined to to make the names public.
We've always done it that way.
I mean, it's, it's, okay, the number one.
No, I doubt it, you guys wouldn't let me have one.
Bid for the two hundred and fifty-seven acres is three hundred and eleven dollars for bid number one. Two hundred and fifty-seven acres at three hundred and eleven dollars. Bid number two. Bid number two is for three hundred and sixty-five dollars on two hundred and fifty-seven acres. And number three. I gotta read it here, it's.
A long letter.
It's a letter. Bid number three is for three hundred and sixty-five dollars per tillable acre. So for the two hundred and fifty-seven acres. Bid number four is for three hundred dollars per acre. Bid number five is for three hundred and fifty-one dollars per acre. Bid number six is for four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and one cent per, per acre.
Apparently gave you a nightmare, doesn't it?
Oh, he's low. Bid number seven is for three hundred and twelve dollars per acre. Bid number eight is for two hundred and eighty-five dollars per acre. Bid number nine, number nine is for three hundred and fifteen dollars per acre. Bid number ten is for three hundred and sixty-seven dollars per acre.
Who was the four twenty-eight?
Kevin Burris. Bitter number six at four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and one cent per acre.
How many tillable acres again?
Two hundred and fifty-seven tillable acres. Did you put, you didn't put those in order, so. I guess it doesn't matter though, the rest of them, you want the bidder names right now? Or not?
I mean, we usually, we usually put, you know, I mean, it's, it's usually in the minutes of who, who bid, going down in the past.
Bidder number one was Greg Shapul. Bidder number two was Sutherland Farms Incorporated. Bidder number three was Larissa Peggie. Bidder number four was Nate Huntley, bidder number five was Troy Watney, bidder number six was Kevin Burris. Bidder number seven was Grant Stein, bidder number eight was Dane Askelson. Bidder number nine was Nicholas Christensen and bidder number ten was Matt Seifer. So we will contact Kevin Burris and confirm that he wants to proceed, otherwise we will go to the next highest bidder and the next highest bidder, number ten, number ten, yeah. Not sure that I got that, go, go away, Eric. Alright.
Got this stuff rolling.
You have a seat at the table, we're waiting for nine thirty, since it's nine to bed, okay? Be careful when you slide into that table, it'll catch your knees.
Okay, thank you.
We have one more for Betty here.
Becky, will you guys go over leads in your presentation or is it something we should review ahead of time?
No, we're, we may not do all of it.
Okay. It is nine thirty, we have Becky Barrett and Jim Barland with the Department of Corrections. It's uh nine thirty, we have uh Becky Barrett and Jim Barland with the Department of Corrections. Dude, second judicial district uh to introduce themselves and give an update.
Like I said, uh my name is Rebecca Barrett, I'm one of uh the probation role supervisors. For the Mason City Field Office. I also cover uh the sex offender unit that covers our whole district of twenty two counties. Uh right now, uh Wright County is being served out of the Mason City office.
My name Jim Barland, I've been with the department for twenty three years. I was a psychologist at the Fort Dodge prison for thirteen years. We're coming here and, and uh I'm the treatment supervisor for the, the second district, the second district has. Um we'll kind of go through it here as four field offices, but then I supervise all the treatment staff, the psychologists, the. Uh community treatment coordinators, the CPMs, and then for the last six months, it's kind of been an eye opening experience, but I've been the Fort Dodge. Probation parole supervisor until they could hire somebody and he starts Friday night for you, so.
Yeah, so we're just here um post July first to talk a little bit about uh the align. Um and with that, we've kind of uh moved away from the Department of Correctional Services and we have joined the Department of Corrections. Um and we hope to continue our strong relationships with the counties that we serve. We do have probation parole staff in the county, um they do come here, um. They come to Clarion and Eagle Grove and we have clients that need it in Belmont as well. Currently, we supervise sixty clients out of this county. We have fifty male clients and ten female. Forty three of those clients are level zero to two, so um low risk clients. Uh we currently have seventeen clients that are level three to level five.
What's, what's the highest level?
What makes you go from one to a five, what's the difference in?
Um so criminal history, um and I'm that they're being supervised for, yeah.
The level fives have to be seen weekly, level fours um bi-monthly. Uh level threes once a month and then.
So and some of those level three to five clients are being um supervised for sex offenses, burglary and other assaultive offenses. Clients that are in, in this county, so he ju- he talked a little bit about treatment. Uh when COVID hit, our treatment programming changed. Normally, clients that live in rural counties would have to travel to Fort Dodge or Mason City or Ames to get the treatment. Um since COVID, and we started doing some of this prior to COVID, our treatment uh is virtual. So clients are able to attend um programming virtually from uh where they live. So which is a blessing because I used to um. Facilitate treatment groups and clients would have violations if they couldn't drive there, couldn't attend. So really, meeting the clients' needs um in their home community.
And we do it Saturday through Thursday, so every day we don't have programming is on, so. Ever hear somebody in the community say they can't make it to their treatment programming or crap? We're pretty accommodating, every evenings, weekends and um we do a lot of treatment, uh different groups, so.
And even in addition, we have active sex offender programming, we have moral recognition therapy, which is MRT. Um and we also have a department psychologist and we have another licensed individual in addition to her. And we also offer therapy, individual therapy for our clients, because we know sometimes they don't have the best history at showing up to providers in the community. Um but they do a nice job with us, so then we also offer them individual therapy as well.
And we have some relapse substance abuse groups, some trauma groups and things like that.
And they can all, and then it, so it says they don't have technology to attend groups. You can get them a tablet, so then they can attend from there as well. Um, I'm gonna go and talk a little bit, touch on the PowerPoint, and. We have our eight uh CDCs across the state. Currently, um in the CBCs, we supervise twenty nine thousand people. Which is a, a huge amount of people.
How many?
Twenty nine thousand throughout our eight CBCs. Uh and in our nine institutions, um we supervise eighty five hundred people. Jim and I have both worked at the Fort Dodge Correctional Facility. Um so we can, we have a lot of empathy for those that do work in the institutions, because it is a tough job. And we have community residential facilities, we supervise one thousand one hundred eighty five people. The second judicial district, uh we have the Fort Dodge Residential Facility. We have BG Clark in Mason City and we have the Marshalltown Residential Facility. Primary or primarily our clients from this area attend Fort Dodge. Or um Mason City are residential facilities. Um currently, we have a hundred and eighty one beds. That are open or that are available to serve the public. And right now, Fort Dodge has sixty six. Um beds available for men and Mason City has thirty nine beds available for men and sixteen for women. BG Clark, the facility in Mason City is the only facility in our district that has.
Yeah, are they full or?
They're full, I mean, they're just. When, when there's an opening, they fill them quickly. We can keep people coming out of county jails or prisons. And we also have people in the community who have repeated OWI violations or. Uh convictions and they will go into the continuum in these facilities as well.
You can see just fiscally the, the cost of treating somebody in the community at seven dollars a day. The cost of uh incarcerating somebody is a hundred and seven dollars.
So does very.
So when you see those comments on KCCI or WHO, why don't, why don't we incarcerate people more often, it's, it's actually a. Yeah, well, I mean, it, it, um especially with the nonviolent. Clients, if you can keep them in the community, it's um easier to treat them and it's fiscally better.
And our prisons right now are twenty two percent over capacity also, so.
And the Fort Dodge Correctional Facility has uh forty five officers short. Um so they are using overtime, they can't find people to work, they have a, I think it's a five or a ten thousand dollar bonus. That they're willing to give and they still can't find people to work, so it's, our prisons are kind of in a dire situation right now, so.
Um so it goes on to talk a little bit about the community-based services for clients in our district. We have pre-trial supervision, we write PSIs, we have probation, we have residential, we have parole. I talked a little bit about the OWI continuum, um and then for those persons who are convicted of domestic abuse assault, we also. Offer the IDAP program, which is active achieving change through value-based behavior, which is a court order program. That's one of the programs that they can do virtually without having to, you know, travel and things like that. Um, so we have uh primary goals for those that are on supervision, supervision. Assess needs and provide treatment, ensuring that they're paying victim restitution and funding, and maintaining employment and continuing your education. The next um portion in the PowerPoint goes through, it just shows pictures of our residential facilities. I mean, this is an option for those on probation, those uh releasing from prison. They're required to work, attend treatment, and advancement is based on progress they're making in the facilities.
Well, they like halfway houses and.
And are they supervised half, are houses, housing or? Okay.
We have staff that supervise there.
They're like usually three, three residential officers on there for sixty.
And some of them housing, that's in Fort Dodge, right? I've employed some of them years ago. It was a good thing.
Yeah, a lot of them were really good workers.
Yes, for me, I've still good friends with two of them.
Yeah.
And that's been ten, fifteen years.
If they can maintain their sobriety, there are a lot of them are.
Very good people.
And a lot of times, they're looking for employment, you know, it's pro-social for them, maintaining employment is a good thing for them. Um and they can do a lot of good things, so. Uh our client age range, thirty four percent of our clients are thirty and under. Fifty two percent are ages thirty one to fifty one, and fourteen percent is over fifty one years of age. Um eighty percent of our clients are Caucasian, eleven percent are African American. Six percent are Latino and two percent is other.
This is for your, the district then?
And then we go on to discuss gender, twenty two percent of our clients are female and seventy eight percent are male. We work on crime assistance or people, so people commit crime more so when they're younger, um and then they kind of age out of. Engagement in those behaviors, so we look at as crime assistance. And so how do we help people achieve that? We assess their risk, which, which we touched on earlier, um levels one through five. Uh we also, when we're assessing r- risks, look at their history, look at their permanent agenda needs. What can we do to help make them, help them be successful in the community setting?
So when they sign up for supervision, they get a validated risk assessment, whether they're sex offenders or whatever, and then um. The POs continually do those assessments, so that kind of drives them up and down the levels, and if they do well, um their risk goes down and then. Um they're not seen as often, they're more. You know, when they do poorly, their risk goes up, so more maintenance of that.
Basically, you guys are there to help get back into society.
Yeah, stay in the community.
And that, that's one thing that I remember when I worked in the prison, is. Ninety percent of the people that go to prison are gonna get out, and some of those people could be your neighbor. You know, you're gonna see them in the grocery store, you're gonna see them back forever, so. Um how we engage with, how we treat people, how we work with people is paramount to their success. And so I kind of implemented that when I worked in the prison and how I worked with people that were there, and that's continued on into the community.
That's kind of why we um, we don't violate a lot of people for technical problems anymore, like using substances or. You know, if they struggle with alcohol or something, because the prisons are overpopulated, they're only keeping them for three months anyway, so we violate them and send them back to prison, they show up three months later. And so we just kind of started a practice of trying to keep them in the community and providing treatment for them, that seemed to be, seemed to work better.
And people that go to prison and that they're. When they come out, I mean, they do have a higher risk or we said it. So it's the more that they become involved in our system, um you know, generally the needs to poor outcomes for that. So, um but yeah, so that's why we try to do our best to keep them in the community and maintain them.
So we've kind of been just violating people that are at high risk for violence in the community, um and the prisons are keeping them longer, so it's kind of be great if we have them.
Um so we look at matching the right level of dosage and dosage is per their level of supervision, um and meeting their needs in the community. So in FY twenty nineteen, we had sixty two percent of our probation discharges were successful. Um if you look at FY twenty one, we're up to seventy cent, seventy seven percent um have been successful. We went from FY twenty nineteen, we had two hundred and sixty four probation revocations. And FY twenty, we had two hundred and eight, and in FY twenty one, we had a hundred and thirty seven. But that's pretty good, I mean.
Really good. Do you attribute any of that to what you just spoke on, the treating them locally rather than just?
Yeah, I think, you know, you go to bat and can they come backwards, yeah, so.
Um for those that were revoked, their probation was revoked, uh forty two percent had a new conviction. Forty percent had a new arrest, and eighteen percent of those had seven or more violations of supervision. So meaning they violated the terms of their probation agreement approximately seven or more times. We go on and look at FY sixteen, seventy nine percent of the people that were on supervision did not return to prison. FY twenty seventeen, similar number in FY eighteen, eighty one point nine percent. So we also have clients who are post incarceration, they're on parole supervision, and um. When we look at their revocations in FY twenty one, seventy six percent um were revoked due to a new conviction. Eighteen percent were revoked due to a new arrest. And, and then six percent were revoked for other violations, and that was because they had an average of twelve or more violations of supervision. So we really are trying to work with them in the community and understand that, and we um understand that people can change, sometimes it just takes. More time than other.
And kind of the magic number with parole is that they can be out of prison for twelve months, um. Their data shows they're likely to stay out, it's in the first twelve months where they're at risk to go back.
And I was previously the high-risk EO uh in Fort Dodge, so when my clients made it six months. It was jumping for joy, you know what I mean, and so that was, and then the really, the hard work kind of came in, and so. This is some of the services that we offer that um, some of them I touched base on previously, but some I did not. Electronic monitoring, we have GPS monitoring or SCRAM. SCRAM is used for those that have alcohol issues. Curfew monitoring, uh drug court. Random drug and alcohol testing, Iowa domestic abuse programming, sex offender treatment programming, individual therapy with licensed therapists. We also, those licensed therapists also are able to uh do EMDR for clients that have a history of trauma, we recognize that a lot of our clients. Um do have a history of trauma, and so we're trying to work with them and address that. Uh do you want to talk about the conference and treatment assessment?
Sure, so um a couple of years ago, we started uh this, just in our district, there are some other districts that kind of started doing a few, but. Every uh, every client level four and five um started getting um. My treatment staff started assessing them for uh trauma and um drugs and. And uh alcohol and mental health. And so every new client that signs up, or that signs up, uh one of my staff do an assessment on them. And then they do a case plan with the PO, and so everyone is expected to do uh some sort of treatment. Uh to m- to meet that dosage, so because the studies show the more treatment that we engage with them. Um the more likelihood that they're gonna stay out and not come back, so. Uh the other thing that we did that was pretty cool, we didn't even mention here, is um our district has got uh several grants um. For tablets, um with the American prison data systems are out of uh New Jersey. And so we started uh dispersing tablets, I think we've had ninety in our dis- in our community. And um I think we have a hundred and some, I should probably know that, um in our prisons. And so we've tied uh our prison inmates that are second district only um to our treatment and probation staff. And so we've, we've actually started providing treatment to our second district clients while they're in prison. Um the prisons have allowed us to do that, and so we've, I think it's about eight hundred thousand dollars in federal grants, we've got. Uh for the tablets, a licensing software, and so the, our staff can continue to meet with them on Zoom. Um while they're in prison, so we're the first ones in the country that have done that. Um some of the districts have kind of jumped on the bandways with that too, so it's been pretty cool.
I'm assuming that's with the hope that when they're released from prison, that you guys have already had interactions with them.
Yeah, so it, it keeps them tied to the community, and the other thing is we can increase their treatment, so when they get out, they can start working. Because they have a lot of that treatment already done, um so they can be more job-ready.
So in this, um the next slide shows our treatment menu of everything that's on the tablet and um that we can work with them on, so. Um Jim talked a little bit about reentry. We are def- definitely working on getting um clients out and back into the community, um looking at identifying their needs, pre-planning. Um discussing concerns and establishing rapport with them. I just did a reach-in visit with a gentleman IMCC who has significant mental health concerns. That's coming back to our district, um and then we did a second follow-up meeting where he was able to meet his PO. Uh virtually before he even got out, um and talked to him about some of his responsiveness. Um you know, what works for him, what doesn't work for him, how to help him be successful. So that's just an example of kind of how, you know, we've done recently.
And you guys would be surprised with the, some of the mental health cases we get in our district that come to our doors, and things are pretty. Severe, we, right now, we have a guy who has uh schizophrenia, uh catatonic type that can't speak. Um that doesn't eat, um will go four or five days without eating, we've had him in the hospital, we've got him committed. So a lot of times, even though we're, and his crimes are vandalism and trespassing and mental health related. But so a lot of times, even though we're, we're a corrections agency, we're really acting like social workers and things like that, so we're trying to get him into a. Uh skill care, um you know, if that, that does happen quite a bit, you know, you think that we just manage people that have. You know, that are just your typical criminals, and um there's so many gaps in our mental health services. In the community and with beds and things, sometimes we do find ourselves doing that too.
Um and that's why the next slide goes on um to talk about, we already discussed how we're twenty two percent over capacity. Uh we're generally third in the nation, in the bottom third in the nation for incarceration. We just talked a little bit about mental health, but over forty percent of our individuals incarcerated in Iowa have a diagnosis of a mental illness. And once again, ninety percent of those people that um are in prison are going to come back to our communities.
When you say that Iowa is generally in the bottom third in the nation for incarceration rate, you mean that we have a higher. Incarceration rate or a lower?
Um and then, so we're really, really working hard, I know the PO is, I'm putting in a lot of. Really working hard, I know the POs have been putting in a lot of fantastic work and working with the clients that they serve. Um so we just wanted to kind of touch base and let you guys know, you know, we're still here, we still been on coming to your meetings that we've signed early basis and touching base and. And we're always available for questions or confirms.
So what was the big change that happened on July first, I mean, I, just the reorganization of the districts or?
Um we were, we became part of the Department of Corrections. So previously, the Department of Corrections was just primarily prisons. And now that encompasses community-based corrections and the prison system.
So what were you guys before that, before you became part of?
Correctional branch employees, okay.
Department of Correctional Services.
Okay.
And Rick is, is familiar with that, he was on.
I was on that board that they, the state took over basically. Uh was that? June, July, we had our last meeting.
Mayor June, I can't remember.
Yeah.
It's the government, or is the governor's reline the bill?
Okay.
And one of the, it was from out of the, there will still continue to be an advisory committee. I didn't know, Rick, if you'd be willing to sit on that advisory committee.
And so I always think of. You were with uh.
It was the second judicial district out of Webster City.
Right, but it was, I thought that it dealt mostly with youth and uh the facility.
Deal with uh.
He's on that board also.
Oh, that's a different, okay.
What we dealt with in Webster, if I recall it right, was like uh. If someone's got AMV. You took care of, or they took care of the machines, yada yada, helping people get out of prison. Giving them a place to stay like a halfway house to help get. Brought back into society.
Do you also deal with the youth side of this, only the adult side?
The only time we work with youth or juveniles is when they have been convicted of a crime, they've been waved to adult court.
Okay. So as long as you're recognized as an adult, then you guys deal with them, okay?
Cause I'm on that board as well, uh. What's it called?
Juvenile.
Juvenile detention center.
Okay, out of the twenty two, how does the Wright County fall into twenty two counties, you know, higher, lower, based on the percentage or are we?
I would say from when I started working in the district in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. To me, we had more probation cases in Wright County then, because we had a PO coming over twice a week, and now we have one here once a week, so to me, that's. That's a good sign that things are declining, I don't have the numbers obviously in front of me, I just know. Um looking at how often that we had a PO here, we have two POs, we have a PO two and a PO three. We have someone for those higher risk clients, and we have a PO two for the more moderate first clients.
And those meetings, is that, uh do you have facilities in the professional building?
Uh so they meet with people at the professional building at the police department.
Okay.
And our local law enforcement is great to work with.
Any other questions? Thanks for the presentation, uh I mean. I learned a lot.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff that I didn't know, so.
Most people don't know what we're, we do, or just. No, appreciate you taking the time, because it, it's good information.
I appreciate you coming and telling my guys then on what's going on.
Oh, absolutely, we'll come around for about every year, so. And if I can put you down for the advisory committee.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You got my email.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. And we have a ten o'clock uh closed session for Iowa Code, section twenty one point five C to discuss strategy with counsel and matters that are. Presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent concerning the railroad repair issue, uh that will be with uh our drainage attorney David Johnson. And that will be held up in the auditor. As there is a scheduled employee meeting uh to be held in this office. That being the fact, I would accept the motion to adjourn from our regular board meeting, knowing that we are. What's that?
Thank you, I missed it.
I did miss it. And you missed it again.
Thank you, click the top one. There you go.
Thank you. Oh, uh UDM. Oh.
Yes.
Upper Des Moines.
Opportunities.
Opportunities unlimited, right? If somebody wants to take that in, no, okay, he heard it. Excellent. Okay, anything else?
You wanted the motion to adjourn then?
To adjourn from this meeting because in closed session, we'll have, we'll. We will reconvene in closed session.
I make the motion, sorry.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There will be trustees for drainage on.
Correct, yeah.